All right, ready? All right, we're going to call the meeting to order. The time is 4:01 for the November 18th Regular City Council and Study Session. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
I'll call council members present.
Okay, terrific. I'll now read the proclamation declaring November as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. This proclamation recognizes the importance of raising awareness, supporting research, and honoring those lives whose lives have been affected by the devastating disease. So, we're honored to have with us today Dr. Lee Reitler and his wife. There he is, doctor, pleasure. If you want to come up, I'll read the proclamation and then you will have a moment to say a few words and then I will take a photo. Sound good?
Sounds great.
Okay, in 2025, about 67,440 Americans will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer and almost 52,000 of them will die from it. Pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers and currently the third-leading cause of cancer death in the United States. By 2030, it's projected to become the second-leading cause of cancer-related deaths. While relatively rare, 12th in new cases in 2025, early detection significantly improves survival rates. Raising awareness and supporting research helps improve the health and well-being of our community. Therefore, I Joe Stapleton, the mayor of Newport Beach, hereby proclaim November is officially National Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month in Newport Beach. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you for all of your time, council members. We really appreciate the acknowledgement. My wife, Dwayne, and I both lost our first spouses to pancreatic cancer, so that's what motivates us to try to make you aware of it. We both volunteer with PANCAN. PANCAN.org is the way to reach us. I have lots of brochures to leave out in the back wherever it's appropriate. I also left you a bracelet in case anyone that you know of ever had pancreatic cancer or there's a contact with you. If you'd remember to wear it on November 20th, it's World Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Date. Our real issue with PANCAN is just to make people aware that we exist. We're a free organization, science-based. Our advisory panel is made up by the leading authorities of pancreatic cancer in terms of research and implementation. So, we're a free service. Our availability is easy. It's online. You can call and say, "I have pancreatic cancer. What do I do next?" And we'll help you with that path. So, Dwayne, do you have something to add?
Well, I think it's important to note that it's such a terrible cancer. It's very, very aggressive and because of that, it doesn't get the advocacy or the funding that other cancers have, the ones that have better results. So, that's kind of why we're advocates of pancreatic cancer. When my husband died in 2003, there was nothing. I spent my hours at night looking for clinical trials, calling people. Not a lot was known about it in terms of the area that I lived in. It wasn't a... It was outside of Philadelphia but far enough that not enough resources. And now we have that. You can call and you can get help with clinical trials. All of the services are totally free.
Wow.
So, it's nice if you know somebody, that they're not swimming in the well of misery trying to figure out what to do next. A doctor only has that much, you know, a certain amount of time to spend. This is a nice resource and it really does a good job. Been around for about 20, 20 years?
25 years.
Yeah.
And I'd also like to remind everyone here that HOG is our sponsor for Orange County. They're terrific at sponsoring our once-a-year fundraising event at Angel Stadium. So, I want to thank them and recognize that Newport Beach has a major impact on what happens in this world of pancreatic cancer, its research, its prevention, and its availability of services. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for your loss, but thank you for what you guys continue to do. All right, we'll do a quick photo over here. Okay, we're going to shift gears a little bit here, but tonight we also have a proclamation honoring the local legend, the business entrepreneur himself, Mr. Jeff Shuline. I will now read a proclamation honoring Jeff and his family as the owner of Crown Ace Hardware for his outstanding contributions to the community and exemplary leadership. We're honored to have Mr. Jeff Shuline here with us tonight. Mr. Shuline, if you want to come up with your family, accept the proclamation, then we'll do a group photo. The Shuline family is very close to me in a lot of different ways, but their son Sensei Shoe, Mr. Mark Shuline, was my guide through the Ben Carlson paddles. So, he was my coach that got me to complete that 30-mile journey. So, I now see where you get it from.
Hundred percent.
Absolutely. Well, terrific. Well, Crown Ace Hardware was founded in Newport Beach in 1948 and has been a cornerstone of local businesses for over 75 years. Jeff Shuline purchased the store in the early 1970s, growing it into a thriving, family-owned business known for customer service, integrity, and community involvement. Crown Hardware has expanded to 28 stores across four states, including three right here in Newport Beach, and I think one in Kauai, too, right? That's incredible. That might be my favorite one.
Mine, too.
Yeah. Jeff has shown a strong commitment to the community, helping raise over $1 million for Chalk Children's Hospital and supporting many local causes. His vision and leadership have left a lasting mark on Newport Beach business and civic life, inspiring future entrepreneurs. Although retired, Jeff's legacy continues through his son, Mark Shuline, who maintains the company's values of excellence and community service. Therefore, we recognize and commend Jeff Shuline for his outstanding leadership, business achievements, and lifelong dedication to the city of Newport Beach. Crown Ace Hardware has... Oh, there we go. That's... They copied that twice. So, yeah, there I Joe Stapleton, therefore, mayor of the greatest city, the city of Newport Beach. Do you recognize Jeff Shuline for his outstanding leadership, business achievements, and lifelong dedication to the city of Newport Beach community? And we extend our sincerest appreciation for your remarkable contribution to the spirit and success of our city. Congratulations.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
I agree. It's been a great place to live and bring up the kids and do business. Newport.
No, I love it. And I always love when I check out at one of your Ace Hardware stores, you could always donate a little bit of change to... And they're always a great local cause. So, whether it's the Duke Foundation, or the Ben Carlson Foundation, or whatever you guys continue to support here locally, or the Chalk Hospital, it's on behalf of the entire city, thank you for what you guys continue to do. It's fantastic.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. Super cool to recognize him for what he's done over these years. And we're super proud to operate the stores here in town. There's a fun story about the history of it. We won't bore you with it today, but it's very cool to go back that far. And people always ask me, you know, "Where'd you get the name Crown?" Well, Corona Mar, Crown of the Sea. That's where it comes from. So, very, very cool that that's a legacy right here in town. So, thank you very much for this.
Some cool history.
I'm honored. Thank you.
Yeah, fantastic. Let's take a photo.
Congratulations.
How are you? Good to see you. Good to see you.
Bring some wine.
Yeah.
Oh, this is great.
There we go.
Okay.
Congratulations.
All right. Good stuff. Okay, now, we're going to get into the history of the city of Newport Beach. Where's Commodore Chris Delfts? There he is, my fellow Commodore. All right, so, tonight, we're going to talk about history. So, if you've joined us throughout the city council meetings, we've talked about the history of this great city, the people, the projects that have helped make Newport Beach what it is. And tonight, I'm very proud and honored to have my very good friend, Mr. Chris Delfts, fellow Commodore, former chairman of the Chamber of Commerce. He's here to talk about what I think is one of the most historic events in the city, which is our Christmas Boat Parade, which will be a continuation of our historical presentation. And Chris has been instrumental in preserving and celebrating one of our community's most beloved holiday traditions, bringing residents and visitors together each year to share in the spirit of the season. And I know Chris well, and he's a local realtor, and he does all this pro bono and free volunteering his time. So, on behalf of the entire city, thank you for what you do as a continued chair of the Christmas Boat Parade. So, with that, I'll turn to you to give us a brief history on the 117 years of the Christmas Boat Parade.
Well, thank you, Mayor Stapleton and council members. One, for allowing me to come here today, and two, for all the support that you have shown the Christmas Boat Parade over all these years. We truly cannot do everything that we do without you and so without the city's support. And so, again, from us, thank you. So, as Joe just mentioned, my name is Chris Delfts. I'm one of the two co-chairs of the Christmas Boat Parade and Ring of Lights. We are literally 29 days away, so less than a month, from the 117th Annual Newport Beach Christmas Boat Parade. Who here has heard of the Newport Beach Christmas Boat Parade? Thank goodness. Okay, so, I'll just get into it real quick. I'll keep it short and sweet for one of our biggest and most beloved events of the city. The Newport Beach Christmas Boat Parade began in early 1900s, launched by Italian gondolier John Scarpa and Joseph Beek, developer of Beacon Bay, Baboa Island, and the Baboa Ferry Line. In 1907, Scarpa first lit a gondola with Japanese lanterns for guests visiting from Pasadena and associated with the Tournament of Roses. On July 4th, 1908, Scarpa organized the first official lighted boat parade with nine vessels led by his gondola. After growing the events over the years, the parade paused briefly during World War I, but then Beek revived in 1919 with many early floats built in his own garage inspired by the Pasadena Rose Parade. Except for a break during World War II, again, the Tournament of Lights ran each summer through 1949, and again, was halted briefly after due to concerns over overcrowding. A new holiday tradition emerged in 1946, actually, when city employees created a floating barge with a lighted Christmas tree. The Beek family later contributed a ferryboat, and more decorated vessels joined in, shifting the event to a Christmas celebration. Today, the revived Tournament of Lights, now known as the Newport Beach Christmas Boat Parade, features around 100 boats and is hosted by the Commerce Club of the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce. The New York Times has named it one of the top 10 holiday happenings in the nation, and as David Beek would state, it is Newport Beach's Christmas card to the world. So, I just have a couple more photos up here. As you can see, very reminiscent of the original from 1907 with Scarpa's boats, the gondolas with the Japanese lanterns, various people have recreated over the years.
Go back... That's incredible.
Oh, and do note in the right-hand side, the Goodyear Blimp made an appearance as well.
Oh, yeah, look at that.
And so, this was, you know, back then, we don't have a date from this, the Newport Harbor Yacht Club, and this is some of the boats that we've seen recently.
Go back to that last photo. Was that Castaways Club back there on the hill? Is that... I don't even know. That might be Corona Mar, actually.
You know, I'm not really even sure where we got these photos. They just gave them to me and I put them in the slideshow, so... You're doing a great job. Thank you. Appreciate that. Obviously, this is Lass Ra, one of our key participants in our parade. They did obviously a tribute to our first responders here in the city last year. This was a year before. This is them again. You'll see a lot of the same boats, obviously changing designs over the years. This boat was also contributed last year with kind of a homage to Ben Carlson. This is the Snoopy Boat. I'm sure you probably all remember seeing and hearing that one on the harbor. And from big to small, people get creative, right? A lot of people incorporate music, even done some pretty extravagant decorations on a small skiff. And of course, we have our Santa Boat taking the rear. With that, we have beautiful homes around the harbor, presenting a glorious backscape to the entire parade. From F1 cars being craned in, to over 1,000 teddy bears on the harbor. And again, another tribute. This is actually the same gentleman, Guy LaRoche, who did a tribute to Ben Carlson. We've had some famous grand marshals in our parade, Mickey Mouse, as well as continuing with our tradition and connection with the Tournament of Roses. We have the Rose Court. They will be out on Saturday night this year. And this past Rose Parade, we actually had... The city of Newport Beach had an entry. It is on record for the longest float in parade history at 165 feet. They won the extraordinary award, and it was the theme Jingle on the Ways, which was one of our themes recently. And now, I'll show you a brief video of kind of scene of what we've done in the past, and this is where we are now. This will talk about drone shows and much more.
The Newport Beach Christmas Boat Parade.
The Newport Beach Christmas Boat Parade.
Five-day-long Christmas Boat Parade.
The 116th Annual Newport Beach Christmas Boat Parade.
So, as you can see, a lot goes into our parade through all of our volunteers. We have over 100 and all of our community partners. The course of the five nights takes a toll on everyone, and this is kind of how we feel after it's all said and done.
That was drunk Santa.
Oh, yeah. Well, no, just tired.
Just a tired Santa.
Yes, yes. So, thank you all for having me tonight. Again, we will be kicking off December 17th. That's a Wednesday down at Marina Park. We'll have a holiday market. We'll have fireworks, drone shows, and a lot of beautiful boats and homes on the harbor. Thank you so much.
Fantastic. Way to get us in the spirit. Well done.
Appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Chris. I know there's a lot of volunteers that are going to be out on the water helping you guys put that on, so that'll be a lot of fun. Okay, just for the reminder to everyone here, next, December 9th, will be my last meeting as your mayor and the final meeting of the history of the city. And we're going to be unveiling the Mount Rushmore of the city of Newport Beach. So, we've got a committee of 15 people that have been hand-selected. They're all coming up with some names. The only rule is you can't be alive to be on Mount Rushmore, so there shouldn't be any drama with anyone who's so there shouldn't be any drama with anyone who's surviving, uh, but, uh, we should be able to unveil that on the December 9th meeting, and we'll do some kind of graphic thing and have fun with it. So that'll be a nice closing to, uh, the year of Celebrate Newport. Okay, we're gonna move into the study session, Underground Utility Assessment Loan Program. Uh, so I think we've got a presentation by Jason Alimam for our finance director, and then we'll get into it.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the city council. Jason Alimam, your finance director. Uh, so this item. The purpose of this study session is to explore potential options for helping homeowners who may face financial hardship when paying underground utility assessments. Two assessment districts are being proposed in the Newport Heights area, representing roughly 600 properties. Estimated project costs range from 25 to 30 million, or approximately $50,000 per home. The idea is to consider whether a city-supported loan program could allow eligible homeowners to defer payments, making participation more financially feasible. Let's briefly provide some background on what an assessment district is. An assessment district is a financing mechanism that allows property owners to fund local public improvements, in this case, undergrounding utilities. It's governed by the California Streets and Highways Code, Proposition 218, and the 1913 Act. Districts are formed through a petition and subsequent property owner ballot process. Once formed, the district issues bonds to finance upfront construction costs. Each property is assigned an assessment based upon the benefit received. The assessments are secured by liens on the properties, and property owners then repay the bonds through annual assessments over a period of about 20 years. Current state law requires standard amortization, meaning there's no built-in ability for payment deferrals under the standard district financing structure. A few cities have addressed this issue by creating local loan programs, most notably Manhattan Beach and Laguna Beach. These programs provide assessment deferrals for homeowners with limited or fixed incomes. The city issues loans that effectively cover the annual assessment payments secured by a lien on the property. The obligation is deferred, not forgiven, meaning it must be repaid upon property transfer, sale, or a set maturity date. Eligibility is typically based on age, income, or financial hardship with a fixed interest rate established upfront. Manhattan Beach's program has yet, not yet resulted in any loans, therefore, we'll take a closer look at Laguna Beach's program to see how we might design something similar here in Newport Beach. In Laguna Beach, applicants must generally be at least 55 years old, although that requirement can be waived if they meet the income and asset limits, but not the age test. So for a two-person household, the income limit is set at 20% above the moderate income limit for Orange County, that's currently $157,000. About 3% of homeowners qualified under Laguna Beach's most recent program. The proposed Newport Heights District project here in Newport Beach is expected to be about 25 million. If roughly 3% of property owners meet the eligibility requirements, we estimate around 500,000 to 750,000 might be needed to fund a similar program. So two assessment districts, uh, have been proposed in the Newport Heights neighborhood. Combined, they include about 600 properties with an estimated project cost of 25 to 30 million. A petition package is currently being prepared. The process requires at least 60% of property owners to sign the petition to move forward. Once certified, staff will bring the item to council to initiate proceedings. If approved, the design, bidding, and construction phases will follow. For property owners, payment options typically include either paying the full amount within 30 days or financing through the bond issuance. Even if the council is supportive of a deferment loan program, it wouldn't need to be finalized immediately. The Newport Heights assessment districts are still several years away from construction, and bond issuance likely three to four years out. However, it could be beneficial for residents to know that a loan option might be available when deciding how to vote on district formation. Staff could return to the council early next year, February or March of 2026, with draft program guidelines for review and potential adoption. The key objectives for any city loan program would be to support financially constrained homeowners, maintain fairness and equity among all property owners, encourage participation, and to limit the city's fiscal exposure and ensure the program remains financially sustainable. There are several important fiscal and administrative considerations, which are outlined on this slide. So for example, staff would need to determine whether some of these tasks, such as loan servicing and eligibility verification, should be performed internally or by a third party. We would also need to identify a funding source for such a program, and recognize that repayment could take years, if not decades. We would likely design our program similar to Laguna's, using comparable age, income, and asset limits. We would also recommend that homeowners pay the interest on the bonds to ensure they maintain a financial stake in the program. For the program duration, we might start with a 20-year term with five-year renewal options. At this point, staff is seeking council input on whether to pursue a deferment loan program, the desired program structure, and eligibility criteria, the level of city funding, and risk tolerance, and then, based on council direction, staff will return early next year with a detailed program framework and funding plan. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Barto.
Thank you for all your time preparing and reviewing all the different, um, programs and options. Um, I wanted to clarify, too, that this, um, program could be available to other districts. I know that Heights was the reason, um, I brought this forward, but, um, in the future, if there's other undergrounding districts that come up, um, is this something that would be a city-wide, um, potential program?
That's a great point. It would, it could be, um, funded with an initial allocation that could be used for future, um, assessment districts that come forward.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Wagon.
Yeah, that was a question I was gonna ask as well. Um, I know that in my old neighborhood of the Lady Streets and, uh, near Dover Shores, they're interested in doing this, too, so I want to see it expanded to, moving forward. Um, just a disclosure, I didn't ask our attorney, but I work for SDG&E, which is not in, um, the service area here of Newport Beach, it's covered by Edison, but just wanted to disclose that, just so there wasn't any, uh, impropriety or any, any, any site that I might have a conflict here, but I do not, because they don't represent anything in this area. Um, I just wanted to just kind of go into a little, too, about tied to the estate. Um, say, somebody qualifies, somebody takes advantage of the program. There's a time that i- is in the Laguna Beach, and that was a recommendation that you had, I just want to make sure that there's no workarounds, you know, so like, say, maybe a son takes over, it was grandma's place, and now somebody's there, I just don't wanna, I want to end it, and I just want to make sure that there's some time commitment to that, that, uh, the program ends for that individual, that, you know, they need to figure out how to get a loan, how to, how to repay that assessment.
Exactly.
That they've got. So I want to make sure that there's protections of that.
Yeah, the program would be designed in a way to hopefully ensure that it, um, upon property transfer to an heir, that, um, repayment would be required at that moment in time. Um, but in some cases, we found that, um, in, um, in inheritance, um, that sometimes they don't communicate those transfers to the county. So there is some risk, and that's why it's recommended that we have at least a 20-year sunset, and it's kind of a check-in, so then we can have five-year renewal options thereafter. So you don't go 30 years and find out it's been transferred to, um, an heir, and the county hasn't been notified, and the city hasn't been notified.
Gotcha. Yeah, no, I, I think it's good, and using the examples from Laguna and Manhattan is, is kind of find the best of both worlds that we can kind of put to make this the best possible for, for the community. Is there any other things that you feel that maybe should be approached, or anything that you, you know, maybe had secondary reserve thoughts on, or any type of other, uh, options for us here that, that might be, needed to be put into consideration?
I guess looking for input on whether it, it's acceptable to ask for interest to be paid, um, on the loan, we think that's fair and reasonable, considering the principal would be deferred, but want, want some thoughts on that as well.
Yeah, I guess the, we see Manhattan didn't take advantage of the program, but, oh, a small amount, and Laguna, and that can make the difference between getting a successful assessment district passed and not, you know, the Balboa Island is kind of that example. I guess, my worry, when you add previous assessment districts, they're not available to that moving forward, so I want to make sure that, I guess, we're just starting here at this point.
Right.
Moving into the future, it's unfortunate that that program didn't exist then, but, you know, this is, I think there's several areas in the city that do need this improvement, and this will give an option for those folks that might be on the borderline, whether that, to vote yes or no, and I would be supportive of this, and, and, and of the proposal that you put forth as far as the, the interest.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Grant.
As always, thank you to staff for working so diligently on this, and I also want to recognize in our audience tonight, a former mayor, Hen, who is the person who actually brought this to us, and it's really a pleasure to have someone of your stature, a former mayor in our community, still working to improve, um, things in our town, so thank you so much. I think that this is a really important program, especially with respect to the fact that we have an aging population here in Newport Beach, and anything that we can do to, um, assist people and support people in aging in place, it helps us if we help them, so this is a wonderful way for us to extend an olive branch in, um, a very trying circumstance for some people, this is a, a burden, or, you know, can be very confusing, and I think that you're right in commenting that this, or, I think, or, um, also, Councilmember Wigan also mentioned, this could be the, the little piece that really, you know, tips this over and makes it a possibility and a benefit to our community, so I'm very supportive. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments up here? If not, I'll go to public comments on this item.
Adam Loverens, I just had some questions I was hoping might be answered. Is this something that would be envisioned to be imposed on each district, or would they vote for it? And then I believe I saw on the slide, a cost of 25 to 30 million, and, and power, and fiber optic was mentioned. I don't know this, are those both city utilities? And I'm wondering, is this cost sharing? I don't know if Newport has a power company and a fiber optic company, so I was curious about that, whether it's imposed or voluntary for a district, and then if there's cost sharing involved, or this is all the city's burden for undergrounding, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor Stapleton and council members. I often tell people that I meet that don't live here, anywhere in the world, this is the best city in the world, and I would never live anywhere else. And the reason for that is the dedication, diligence, and fine judgment applied by this city council, as well as so many city councils ahead of you. I know firsthand that it takes a lot of effort. I commend you for your service. I'm here to speak in favor of the proposal. I'm speaking from the perspective of experience. Uh, when I lived on the peninsula, um, there was an undergrounding proposal for the peninsula in the area that I lived. It failed the first time. Balboa Island failed the first time. I believe there have been failures in Corona del Mar. And one of the principal objections raised by opponents of undergrounding is that it's not fair, because people who are very economically disadvantaged must still participate in the program. And, uh, while that's true, uh, I also know that moving undergrounding forward is a great benefit to the city as a whole, not just the affected residents, and so there is a greater purpose here. And, uh, this council, I believe, and councils before, have tried to facilitate the success of undergrounding. That has resulted in a lot of progress with undergrounding, but it's been halting progress because of the difficulty of convincing people to take the burden of a significant amount of money. And, uh, so, in my experience, uh, that was one of the reasons that the, um, the district that I was in on the peninsula failed first time. So we backed up and tried it again, and finally, we were successful, like in other districts. And it would be so much better, not just in terms of promoting the success of an undergrounding initiative, but in terms of fairness to the longtime residents of Newport, uh, who are valued residents, just like every other one, and who just don't have the financial capability at hand to meet their obligations. I prefer to think of this not as a loan program, but as an investment program. The city is investing in its future and investing on behalf of homeowners that can't do it themselves. We all will benefit, I'm sure of that, and therefore, I implore you to move ahead with this project.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
By the way, most people say mayor who at this point? I, I appreciate, I appreciate your comments.
It's because you moved out of District 1. You went up on the hill.
Yeah.
You walk on the peninsula, people remember.
Yeah, right. Okay.
Yeah, thanks a lot. Thank you. All right, terrific. Any other public comments on this item? Okay, so you know, we'll bring you back here, um, you're looking for some direction, it sounds like we've got support to my left, do you guys want to offer any comment, suggestion, support, yes or no? Everyone's in favor? Straw vote, do you need directions on dollar amounts, or age, you want to start working on it, and you come back to us, and?
We can bring something back, yeah.
Okay. Do you want to just do a straw vote on everyone who's in theory?
And I just wanted to add, I think he was asking to, on the interest rate percentage, that's what Laguna did, um, was beneficial to the city as well, I think that would be beneficial to us.
Yeah, what, what they did in Laguna was they, the interest rate that was applied was 1% higher than the bond rate, so at the time of bond financing, we would determine what that interest rate is and add 1% to it.
Okay.
And then the age, um, they were two different on the slides, uh, what, 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 do you think the Laguna model is, is probably the best?
Uh, they started off with the higher age, and they didn't, no one qualified, so I think it's probably important that we start at 55, um, but I do think the income and asset limitations are appropriate.
Okay, that's fine with me.
Yeah, and I think council could waive that in the event there was a unique case, I guess.
Yes, it could also be set up in Laguna Beach, they have, the city manager has discretion to, um, do some waivers, so that could be looked at, too, um, to keep things moving as a potential option.
Okay, yeah, I just commend staff for your time on this, I think when you're talking about investment in our community, it's been done in my neighborhood for a long, long time, and it's reimagined the entire area, so we'll do a straw vote on who's in favor of this? Is that seven? Yep, okay, cool. Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, we're not gonna recess, we'll go directly into the regular meeting, so I'll go ahead and, uh, call the meeting order at 4:39, roll call please, ma'am clerk.
Councilmembers present.
Okay, so now's the time for invocation, that will be led by Pastor Phil, uh, Eskin, the White House of Costa Mesa Church is here, okay. Thank you, pastor.
Mayor Stapleton, city council, esteemed city council, I always consider it a privilege to be here, and it's Iskins, Ian, Iskins, nobody says it right, but, um, I came here at first, I want to apologize, because, uh, in the Costa Mesa City Hall chambers, they have "In God We Trust," and I made a comment, uh, that it, it wasn't here, and I got a little nervous, and I think it might have been the mayor, or this gentleman, that said, "It's there." And I went, ooh, I said, I apologized, don't hold it against me. But, um, intrinsic with these courageous words, "In God We Trust," Frederick Douglass, the greatest civil rights leader of, of the 19th century, he declared, "I have one great political idea. That idea is an old one, it is widely and generally accepted, nevertheless, it is very generally trampled upon and disregarded. Uh, the best expression of it I have found in the Bible, it is in substance righteousness exalts a nation, but sin is reproach to any people. This constitutes my politics," he said, "the negative and the positive of my politics, and the whole whole of my politics. I feel it my duty to do all in my power to infuse this idea into the public mind, that it may speedily be recognized and practiced upon our people. In God We Trust." Let, let's pray. Dear only Father, we're so grateful to be part of this grand experiment in, in the American, uh, scene of, of, uh, uh, people having the right to vote, people being able to make decisions in their community. communities, and in the life, and the citizens, and taking into account every single aspect of a city's environment and its citizens. So, Father, I pray for this, esteemed City Council, Father, that wisdom would prevail, that right decisions would be united upon. And, Father, we just thank you for an opportunity to stand here as just this lowly pastor, and to pray this session into being. And we pray these things in the name of Jesus. Amen. Thank you, City Council, very much.
Pastor Iskins, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, Councilmember Wigan, why don't you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
And the reason why the God entrusts his faith is that way, is so it's for our eyes as council to view them, not when it's in the front, as others, for the public to view them. So if you please repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please read the notice regarding public comments on agenda and non-agenda items.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are invited on items listed on the agenda and non-agenda items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda and non-agenda items.
Okay, we'll now proceed with public comments on all agenda and non-agenda items. Please note that members of the public will still have an opportunity to comment on agenda items under consent public hearing, current business, and closed session later in the meeting, provided that you do not offer comments at this time. Mr. Moser.
Mayor Stapleton, members of the council, my name is Jim Moser. Regarding Agenda Item Roman numeral six, which is a matter that a council member wants placed on a future agenda, tonight, that item happens to have to do with a request to, for the staff, to update the municipal code regarding wireless communication facilities in Newport Beach, sometimes known as cell towers. I just wanted to remind the council that a former city council took some pains to revise the current code, the code that we have now, to give greater public transparency to the choice and location at which those communication facilities go. The request here seems to make, revert to a less public, less visible process than we have currently. And I also note that the item is so detailed, that it looks to me like probably the proposed revisions already exist, as has happened with some previous items, and will come back fully baked with a solution to the problem, rather than a discussion of the problem. We may even hear that there is some working group that has been formulating these revisions. I don't know when they come back. I would just suggest and comment that it would be, rather than having so much detail, it would be good for the council to discuss between yourselves what the current problems are with the wireless facility location process, and then instruct staff on what solution you would like to see, rather than just having some solution come back at a future meeting. I think more discussion of this should be happening. And the second comment I wanted to make is on Roman numeral 10, which is your opportunity to reconsider actions that you took at the previous meeting. And the action I would like you to reconsider is this map of bicycles, of sidewalks in the city of Newport Beach, where it's legal to ride sidewalks. This was on November 4th, part of Agenda Item 10, it was Resolution 2025-78. I am a bicycle rider. This is replacing a written list of streets and sides of streets that I could use. This map is very difficult to decipher. I don't think the council was told how it differed from the list that we had in the past. Looking at this, there are many of the streets, I cannot tell where the bike legal sidewalk starts or ends. So I don't think this map is really a definitive thing that bicycle riders need if they want to be sure that they're acting legally. So I recommend you reconsider this, and come back with an actual list of the streets, and what parts of the streets are intended by this map. I cannot tell. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on agenda, non-agenda items?
My name is Mike Smith. On October 28th, the City Council voted to approve the Surf Park project. Now that it has been approved, and the Surf Park will be keeping the operation golf course on holes three through eight, the southern section of the Newport Beach Golf Course, the City Council should now move to withdraw the housing overlay request made to the California Coastal Commission on August 16th, 2024, for this specific section. The southern section of the golf course is zoned specifically as open space recreational, and is identified in the Santa Ana Heights specific plan. The Surf Park project has committed to keeping the southern section, holes three through eight, as open space recreation for golf, use, and play for the general public. The southern section of the Newport Beach Golf Course is located in the 100-year flood zone, and does fall within the jurisdiction of the California Coastal Commission. Given that it is zoned open space recreation, and that the Surf Park is committed to operating golf for the general public in this section, there is no need to go forward with this specific area for the housing overlay request. Question, will the City Council make a motion and vote tonight to withdraw the housing overlay request from the California Coastal Commission for the southern section of the Newport Beach Golf Course, specifically for golf holes three through eight? If yes, thank you. If no, can you please explain tonight why not? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments on agenda, non-agenda items?
Hi, Mayor Stapleton, hi, Mayor Stapleton, and committee members. I left the paper, I guess, in the binder, maybe I should have taken it. Down on Superior Avenue, where it meets Highway 101, there's a pedestrian overpass bridge, and there's a parking lot, and a little seating area. It's, it's very poorly lit at night, and the entrance to that parking lot is also not very well lit, and it's kind of secluded from the rest of, I guess, just the rest of the roads that are over there. Superior Avenue kind of dips down below that parking lot, and so from the parking lot, you don't really see the cars that are going by. And Highway 101 is a very busy street down below, so anything that's kind of happening in that parking lot, you just, you wouldn't be able to really hear it from down below, which is a pretty big safety concern. There's no cameras in that parking lot. The whole parking lot itself is just a very big safety concern. I was just curious. I don't know how the city decides when or where they're going to install security cameras. I don't know how to go about putting 24-hour cameras. I don't know how that happens. I just, I was wondering if it's possible to put a 24-hour camera somewhere in the parking lot, or just there, because nothing gets heard from up there. And I think that that should be installed, for the future safety of, I guess, just women, specifically who are there. But that was my concern.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you find my, if you Google my name and city of Newport Beach, you'll find my email on the city website. If you send me an email, I know the park very well, I'll make sure we connect you with somebody in City Hall, so we can have that conversation. But thank you for bringing that to our attention. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Ron Rubino from East Bluff. I'm here representing our Homeowners Association. Later on in the agenda, you have a consent calendar item for the, has e-bike regulations. If you pull it, we'll have some discussion, and if there's an opportunity, or if it's appropriate, you wanted to know my comments, I'd say them now. So I'm looking for direction. If that item, I'd like it to be pulled, so we could make some comments.
I think you could save your comments, then.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, any other comments on agenda or non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none, now's the time for council announcements, oral reports from council members on committee activities, and the time for council members to request an item to be placed on future agendas. Councilmember Wigan, do you have any announcements or reports?
Yeah, I'd like to make a, just a quick announcement, that there's congrats in order for Ross Sinclair and his Newport Harbor Boys on the Open Division Water Polo Champions, beat CDM down there, Sarah, 10 to 3. But Ross is one of our seasonal and reserve lifeguards here at Newport Beach, so it's pretty cool that he gets to do that in the summer and represent our city, but also represent the best of the school in Newport Beach.
Because you mentioned your name?
Yeah.
Well, congrats to them, that was a big deal, for sure, and a convincing victory, for sure. Councilmember Barto.
Yes, since we last met, I had a meeting of our Water Quality Highlands Committee. They've been working on projects over the past 11 months to come up with ideas they can bring to City Council in the future, so you guys will be seeing some recommendations from them. There's a lot of very easy projects, but also, a member of staff said rightly, that we have work for the next 10 years, so it's a good start, and there's a couple easy fixes, but they are very motivated and dedicated to improving the city, so it's an honor to work with them. Additionally, I served on the Randall Preserve Advisory Committee, we had our meeting there. They're pushing their additional meetings out a couple more months to work on kind of their plan for what they want to do with the area, and in the future, probably 18 months from now, we'll be working with them to determine how City of Newport Beach wants to help them have access to that. So something that is a long ways away, but is, you know, in progress.
Okay, terrific.
Oh, and then last thing, I was honored to represent the mayor at the Newport Beach Citizens Police Academy graduation, so that was very fun.
Yeah, well done. Thank you for covering. Councilmember Grant?
Yeah, a few things. I want to congratulate former three-time mayor Ed Selich, another mayor in our midst, as the Citizen of the Year, and an accomplished restaurateur Ron Salisbury as Businessman of the Year, and thank the Newport Beach Chamber for hosting this important recognition opportunity. Also want to say bravo to the Newport Fire Foundation for their inaugural event in support of our fire paramedics and lifeguards. It was really remarkable to learn all the foundation is already accomplishing in such a short time, less than a year in operation. They're offering body scans and equipment and family support services. Special thank you to Brian Bois, the president of the foundation. And then finally, I am the city representative to the Transportation Corridor Authority, and I just want to give a last brief update for the year. Earlier this year, staff, Councilmember Kleiman and I, all met with the agency staff regarding the toll roads' impact on our community. In August, the agency initiated a targeted study of State Route 73 to better understand traffic patterns and rider costs. Results of the study could lead to piloting, piloting a project which would price adjust at Newport Beach adjacent toll entrances. We're talking about probably Benita Canyon and Newport Coast, and that may have benefits in increased mobility in our city. So all good things coming through this study, hopefully. And I'll plan to share the study results and any revised policies as they become available in early '26. Thank you.
Okay, terrific. Councilmember Blom.
Break my never doing these, and I just wanted to congratulate Mayor Pro Tem Kleiman on getting elected to the OCTA board, a huge accomplishment for what she's been doing in the city, and not an easy feat to get those votes, so congratulations.
Okay. Councilmember Weber.
And to further add to that, she is the first representative from Newport to be on the board.
Well done.
Congratulations.
Condolences. Kidding, great organization, we love them. Mayor Pro Tem Kleiman?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. I guess so. Made her speechless. I'll just echo some of the comments, the Citizen of the Year Dinner, congrats to Ed Selich, former mayor, that was awesome. And then obviously Ron Salisbury, no one more deserving, 92 years young, I think. Some incredible stories that he shared. That was a lot of fun. I also had the pleasure-
Two minutes of stories.
A lot of 92 years of stories, that's a lot. I also had the water well signing, so it was a great moment with the mayor of Laguna Beach, with Alex Renagi and Ted Bowie, the mayor of Fountain Valley. We were in, I guess it would have been, I don't know, it was a territory between Newport and Laguna Beach, maybe county, state property, we'll call it Newport. It was unfriendly territory. We did a great signing ceremony, and I just got back from Philadelphia, so I used a Benjamin Franklin feather pen to sign the contract, so that was one of my highlights of the year. But to bring Newport Beach to 100% water reliability, water independence, congrats to Mark V. and Dave Webb and our entire team for getting that project across the line, that was huge. And that was a great signing ceremony. And to Brian Bois and the Newport Beach Fire Foundation, and to our chief, and your entire team who was there that night, that was a lot of fun. And thank you to, you know, Bob Olson for helping host that. I went to the Irvine Terrace annual HOA meeting. Being the mayor of Newport Beach is one of the greatest honors of my life, and one of the things I love most is going to visit all these different vibrant villages in our community, and I think we're just so blessed to have the residents we have, and further credit to the Irvine Terrace residents, those are a great group of people, and just enjoyed my time with them, it was a lot of fun. And then last night, I continued the legacy and the tradition of victory in Newport Beach. I beat Mayor Stevens in the KOCI Poor Man Radio Mayor's Happy Hour hosted by our friend Mario Moravec at Muldoons. So it was filled of dancing, singing, pinning the beer on Poor Man, and a lot of fun, but I took home the trophy, so it was a great victory for Newport Beach. Mayor Kleiman, you're going to have your hands full next year when you got to compete, but I think you'll be fine. Okay, Aaron Harp, you want to make an announcement?
Just briefly, during public comment, there was a request to make a motion to the City Council to change the land use designations related to the Surf Park and the Golf Course, and that wouldn't be appropriate for the council to take action on this evening, because it's not on the agenda, and the Brown Act would prohibit it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have one matter that's been brought forward by Mayor Pro Tem Kleiman. Per City Council Policy A1, council members may bring forward a matter for consideration, and if approved by a straw vote, of the council, staff will return with a report on the matter at a later meeting. The item for consideration is the following. I don't need to read that, you can see it on your screen as part of the city's update on the municipal code related to wireless communications. All in favor of the proposed consideration? Okay, is that unanimous?
Matter passed by straw.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, please read the notice regarding public comments on consent calendar.
This is a, this is a time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion, Items 1 through 15. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items, recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion, unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Wigan, do you have any items to pull from consent calendar or conflicts announced related to Items 1 through 15?
I do not.
Okay, Councilmember Barto.
I'd like to pull Item 3.
Okay, Councilmember Grant.
None.
Blom.
Thank you. I have a conflict on Item 4 based on real property interest at 417 and 50130th Street.
Okay. Councilwoman Weber?
None.
Mayor Pro Tem Kleiman?
None.
Okay, I have more conflicts than Councilwoman Blom, this is a record. I have a conflict on Agenda Item Number 9 based on my interest in properties at 4100 and 4110 MacArthur Boulevard, and Agenda Item Number 11 because of an adjacent property owner is a client of my firm, Spinnaker Investment Group. Do we have a motion?
With Item Number 3 being pulled by Councilmember Barto, I move the remainder of the consent calendar, including amendment to Item Number 1, the minutes, and noting the following conflicts of interest. Agenda Item Number 4 by Councilmember Blom based on his interest in properties at 417 and 50130th Street. Agenda Item Number 9 by Mayor Stapleton based on his interest in properties at 4100 and 4110 MacArthur Boulevard, and Agenda Item Number 11 by Mayor Stapleton based on his business interests.
Okay, terrific. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Terrific, we got a second by Councilmember Blom. Public comments were good, right? We did it on consent or not yet? Okay, public comments on consent calendar items. Mr. Moser.
Mayor Stapleton, members of the council, my name again is Jim Moser. On the consent calendar, Item Number 6 is a throwing more money towards an existing contract with a coastal commission lobbyist that the city hires. As I- coastal commission lobbyist that the city hires. As I explained in writing, I recommend you vote no on that. I think it's a waste of money, and I think uh, previous councils have come to the conclusion that the city is actually both more effective and more credible when we simply have our own staff negotiate matters with the coastal commission staff and uh, not intervening a high-paid lobbyist as usually a private developer would do. Uh, item number seven is the purchase of six uh, neutrality vehicles. Uh, I noticed in the staff report, the cost has gone up considerably compared to the original estimate. You might be asking why that happened. Item eight is a contract for video streaming provided by the library. You might ask how many views we get per year so that you can figure out what the cost per view is, and you might also ask if you have a recommendation about this from the library board of trustees. Uh, item number ten is the need to retrofit the air conditioning system in a three-year-old fire station that we have. I, I'm sure that's much needed, but you should be, I think, be asking if the lesson learned from that is being incorporated into the next li- uh, fire station on the peninsula that we are going to be rebuilding. Probably will need the same accommodation that this one is, so hopefully we do it in advance rather than as a retrofit. And then finally, the American cover is yours, but on item number eleven, which is the lease for the Harbor Island Community Association Bridge. Uh, I, this is a fifty-year contract, and we're going to be leasing five thousand and some square feet of tidelands to the Harbor Island Association for the next fifty years. And the rate seems to be about seven dollars and seventy-eight cents per square foot per year, and I could find no explanation of where that number came from. So the council might be wondering why we're charging that and how that relates to other tar lines that we lease. Thank you.
I can assure you, Mr. Moser, we will not be using the same HVAC uh, contractor we used on Fire Station Number Two for Fire Station Number One, for sure.
Uh, Adam Le- Adam Leven's again, and I echo Mr. Moser's sentence, sentiment on item number six. I hope you would vote no on that. It's a professional service agreement with a organization called Schmitz and Associates. Um, as I understand from the staff materials, it went from up to seventy-five thousand this year to a hundred and twenty thousand, and now tonight to two hundred and forty thousand. I've looked on the website for this company, and it says, quote, "Mr. Schmitz's expansive, cultivated, and effective working relationships with government planners, elected officials, planning and coastal commissioners", close quote. Um, there's articles I found in the LA Times in a publication called The Humboldt Waterkeeper that speak to a coastal commissioner staying at a property of Don Schmitz, of Hillside Ocean View, with an average nightly rental rate of eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars, um, without being charged. The articles note cozy relationships between commissioners, developers, and their high-powered, politically juiced consultants." Those are quotes. Newport Beach is mentioned, the Fair Political Practice Commission, and something you've heard from me before, seeking to avoid the appearance of impropriety. Um, I hope some of you share my concern that cultivating relationships through gifts to coastal commissioners is problematic and isn't real helpful. Um, and it notes some of his recent accomplishments and citing this recent LCP amendment before coastal for short-term lodging, wherein I believe a person had to have twenty units to have a short-term lodging permit. So that kind of eliminated members of the public from having short-term lodging in those mixed-use districts. And then past efforts are mentioned of, of trying to get Newport Beach to be in the ports of California, which is like Long Beach, LA, San Diego, and Huname Bay, or Port of Hunami, deep-water shipping ports. And Mr. Schmidt, speaking on that, said, quote, "Newport Beach, which was made by the Department of Defense and the Army Corps of Engineer, is the designative port of harbor for refuge for shipping going up and down the coastline between San Diego, Long Beach, and LA," close quote. I've never seen a container ship here, and, and just that idea seems kind of silly to me. But uh, again echoing Mr. Moser, I think city staff is the more appropriate lobbyist at coastal rather than uh, organization that has gifted in the past to commissioners. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments on consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back here. We got a first by uh, Mayor Protem Kleiman, a second by Councilman Blom. Uh, let's vote.
Consent calendar passed by a unanimous vote and accept minus item um, number three.
Okay, uh, item three was removed by Councilmember Barto. This is the ordinance number twenty five, that, twenty twenty-five dash thirty-five regarding bicycle registration regulations. Councilor Barto, do you need a staff report on this?
I don't. I, I'm basing on some feedback from the public, so.
Okay. Yeah, we can, if, yeah, okay. We'll go ahead and open item number three to public comments?
Mayor Stapleton, council members, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Um, as I mentioned earlier, I'm Ron Rubino. I live in East Bluff. I'm representing our HOA. We have four hundred and sixty homes. Our property is a long jamboree between East Bluff Drive. We're across from the high school. We're across from the shopping center where Ralph's and Mutt's and CVS are, and the Newport Beach Tennis Club. We have a lot of children. And the Bluffs area, which I have a house that my child, uh, two grandkids and my daughter live in, uh, also there's many, many, many children. So e-bikes are pretty uh, highly used among youth. Uh, the problem is safety, and you know, I recognize, my personal belief is uh, the parents have a huge responsibility to train the children to ride the bikes in an appropriate manner and what are the rules. And I think the city should be commended. I, I call all the parents to look at the website. Um, you have to do a little dig- digging, but the material from the police department that's been presented to the schools is in the website. And the rules and the recommendations and the equipment and the safety measures are all well-spelled out. The city has done an excellent job. It's up to us as parents, you know, to really train, train our children and follow up on it. But some kids are not following the rules. And I think the ordinance has a, one particular item that my HOA asked me to speak to, uh, you know, our council member, uh, Robin Grant, was kind enough to listen to me, and Michelle Barto was kind enough to meet with us and a couple other representatives, and I thank them for their time. They're very responsive. The issue is the authorization of bikes to, on sidewalks. It kind of goes to Mr. Moser's comment about the map, and, and the street list is missing, and the map is hard to interpret. Well, on residential streets in East Bluff, we don't want e-bikes riding on sidewalk, period, no exception. Now, this is not a bike where you're training your child to use a bike, and sometimes the bike versus the e-bike is confused relative to the ordinance. So there's a certain section in there, and uh, Councilmember Barto knows this when I'm speaking to, that we really think should be removed. Uh, I don't think it was the council's intent to authorize e-bikes to ride on residential sidewalks, unless it's specifically allowed for safety reasons in the map. So it ties to, you gotta have a clear map and a list of streets. Right now, it would allow e-bikes on East Bluff home sidewalks, and we don't think that's safe or appropriate. Uh, along the curb, perfect. In the bike lane, perfect. On the appropriate speed limits, perfect. Stopping at stop signs, stopping at red lights, not riding across traffic, it's dangerous. And our motorists have told me a number of stories of almost hitting children, particularly as it gets into the evening and this time of the year. So wearing lights on the bike, you know, all those things, there's many of these items in the ordinance. I think you could improve on some of the safety items in the ordinance in addition to replacing. Now, the one I want to recommend most and is that the shopping centers. It is dangerous at CVS, Ralph's, and Mutt's because of all the kids on the pavement near shopping centers. And I'm sure if I surveyed other shopping centers, there would be similar complaints. So I don't think the e-bike, which is a mini motorcycle, should be driven on the pavement in front of the store openings where people are walking in and out. I think stores should uh, authorize parking s- space so that they can be used, but then parked appropriately like a motorcycle, a moped would be. I know that might take longer to work on, but I'd like to plant that seed with the city, to think about the shopping centers having authorized e-bikes. I'm not against e-bikes. I'm only asking them to be used in a safe manner, and I'm asking the city to help us with the appropriate ordinance. I think the city's doing a great job uh, with the police department and educating through the schools. I encourage all parents to read those rules on our website and talk to your children.
Okay. I, I think you're spot on. It all starts at home, no doubt. Okay, any other public comments on Agenda Item uh, number three? Mr. Moser?
Uh, thank you again, Mayor Stapleton. Uh, I submitted extensive written comments on this item, which I won't repeat here, although I, I have the impression there may be an attempt tonight to kind of rewrite the ordinance at the DAS and then bring it back at your next meeting for a second reading. I, I would advise against that. As I said at the meeting where this was introduced, I, I think bike riding in Newport Beach and especially e-bikes is a matter of enough public concern. That's, really needs more public vetting, some kind of workshop, study sessions, something of that sort before it comes back. And I would want to point out, although Charter Section four twelve does appear to give the council the authority to alter a, a ordinance at its second reading and then bring it back five days or more later. But there is also the Brown Act, and I would notice that this is listed under ordinances for adoption, and the agenda listing says ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three, thirty-five, second reading. It says nothing about that this could be the first reading of an alternate ordinance. If you do revise it at the DAS, uh, my main recommendation, what I think many of the recommendations for safe operation here are very useful, uh, but as written, they are confined to the operation of motorized conveyances. I would suggest that bicycles, conventional ones, human-powered, the kind I ride, should be subject to the same safe operation rules. And among those rules, I, for the wide sidewalks that you've designated for being legal for bikes to ride on, the ones on that map that I questioned, uh, there's a provision here that people on this, on the, any right-of-way, including a sidewalk, have to go in the direction of the flow of traffic. That has not been how bike-legal sidewalks have worked in the past. It's a very cumbersome um, restriction on people using those bike, those sidewalks. Like pedestrians, people use them to go on bicycles both ways. In some cases, it's kind of the only way to get where you want to go without very inconveniently crossing streets and using less safe routes. And then secondly, my own experience riding on sidewalks is that the biggest concern has been from people coming up silently behind you on an e-bike or a conventional bike, and whether you're a pedestrian or a cyclist, not knowing that they're approaching, and they go whizzing by you, endangering both themselves and the pedestrian or other bicyclists. And like other cities, I think you should require that people give an alarm before they pass from the rear. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments on this item?
Hi, everyone. My name is Annie Solentik. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. Um, and I've had the pleasure of speaking with Councilmember Barto about this already. Thank you especially to you for being so receptive to public comments and just um, meeting with me and another mom from our neighborhood. Um, I live in the Port Streets, and I have a three-year-old and a four-month-old. Um, my three-year-old has come dangerously close to being hit by teenagers on e-bikes going thirty-five miles an hour several times. Um, it takes my breath away when it happens, and it's been very concerning. Um, so I just wanted to come and voice my support for the ordinance as it stands. I think it's uh, pragmatic and effective, and I would hope that it gets passed sooner than later. Um, this is something that I go out on a walk with him every day and worry about. Um, I think it will be really helpful to the safety of all of our children. Um, the signage of relevant speed limits will be an important addition to that, as well as enforcement. Um, I think Councilmember Barto and I spoke about um, working with the police to hopefully come and enforce um, and ticket people who are being unsafe on e-bikes um, occasionally so that that can deter especially the teenagers from, from acting unsafely. So uh, I look forward to working with you on that, the whole council, um, and I'd be happy to um, you know, work with the police directly on that as well. But uh, I would just really encourage uh, the passage of this ordinance sooner than later. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments?
Hello, council. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Kimberly Ward. I am another mom from the Port Streets, and I also had the pleasure of speaking with Michelle Barto last week about this ordinance. Um, I also support the passage of this, as is um, like my friend Annie, my two kids over there who were not supposed to be here today, but you know, that's the way it goes, um, have also come dangerously close to being hit by e-bikes going easily thirty to forty miles per hour. Um, not all of them, but a lot of them have no regard for safety at all, especially through the Green Belt that um, you know, goes the whole width or length of the Port Streets. I live two houses from the Green Belt, and I see them. They are reckless, not, I mean, again, this is kind of a generality, but um, you know, they're not looking uh, where they're going. They're on their phone, they're looking behind them. Uh, so safety measures do need to be taken. I think the culture of e-bikes, starting from the laws, um, and just letting them know what is allowed, what's safe, what we expect of them, and then from there, hopefully moms and dads and the families can step in and try to push that narrative forward would be a huge step forward. So I know Michelle was talking about implementing signs um, throughout the Green Belt. That would be a huge step, um, working with the police, making sure that we're all on the same page to enforce the laws that we're setting forth today. That would be a huge help. Um, but anything we can do sooner rather than later, because I just feel like this issue, um, a kid, you know, a young kid, hopefully, hopefully not, but um, I feel like the, it's written on the walls, you know, an accident is just waiting to happen, and I feel like action needs to be taken immediately, as soon as possible, to avoid that at all, at all costs. So, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back here. Uh, Councilor Barto?
Yes, thank you. I pulled this item because um, I got lots of really great community feedback, lots of meaningful feedback, and lots of items that I think we as a city can do without um, adding further to the municipal code. However, there is the exception in item um, one-two-point-five-six-point-zero-three-zero, exception number four, um, writing, operating on sidewalks, which I think is confusing to the public. Um, and I am, section one-two-dot-five-six-dot-zero-six-zero overlaps a lot of those same safeguards. Um, I spoke with the city attorney, and I spoke with the police chief, and just asked if we would be able to enforce kind of the intent of this ordinance if we struck that exception number four in one-two-point-five-six-point-zero-three-zero, and they said that that would be fine, um, as it is confusing to the public and um, the intent stands. So that was my proposal for changing the ordinance today and to move to the next reading.
Okay. Councilor Grant?
Just real quickly, we had a couple comments, I think from um, Mr. Moser and somebody else about a list of the streets. I don't know if that's accurate, but is there a reason why we don't include a list of the streets that are permitted to have, you know, that are on the map, so it's, it's, it's clear? Is there a reason why we didn't, or should we be adding that?
Um, the map was done separately from, it's not part of this ordinance, but the map was done separately. Um, but I could, um, Dave Webb could speak to that if you wanted that.
Yeah, maybe. Just want to know if, if it's good to have a list of streets, or if it's something that we, you know, thought through?
Well, actually, the, the exhibit that was being changed is in the formal code right now, and it had existing streets and proposed on it, and we changed it with the committee to basically include the proposed and keep it as exhibit. Some people like the visual. I know Mr. Moser's having just some discussions on the limits. If I looked at it, it's pretty well, but if you do a, a list, you're gonna have to list all the streets' limits. It'll be quite intensive, a little more graphical. So one way or the other, we could list them, but I think the graphic image is, displays what we want there.
I'll defer to you. I just didn't, you know, didn't really necessarily have an opinion on it. I just wondered, you know, why, so it's a lot of streets, is what you're saying?
A lot of streets. It's, it's an image of the city. It shows all the arterials in which streets are allowed to ride. On both sides, there's a line on the arterial that's allowed. Um, and if, you know, you get down to like Corona Mar, there's a gap there, and that was one of his questions. Well, it's obviously from where we can't ride. We're not allowed to ride through the village, so the bike lanes stop, I believe, at Avicato, and they start again at uh, where there's sidewalks at um, I think it's Hazel. You could look at that, but we have that limit in there.
Okay, as long as we've adequately addressed it, I'm-
And the sidewalks we're talking about are- And the sidewalks we're talking about are generally really big sidewalks. So this is MacArthur, Jamboree, Newport Coast.
Those are big. There's some that you can ride along in Corona Mar, up by Cameos Highlands, it's a smaller sidewalk. And then you'll see a gap as you go, because there is no sidewalk once you pass Cameos Shores, and the state park has no sidewalks, but you have a trail out there. But we don't show that as a rideable link, because there aren't any, things like that.
Okay, any other comments up here? Sounds like we have a motion. Do you want to make a motion, Councilmember Barto?
Sure. I move to strike exception number four from section 12.56.030 and bring this back for a second reading in December.
Okay, I would second that. Okay, discussion. Let's vote.
Motion passes by unanimous vote.
Okay, terrific. Now moving to public hearing. Now it's time to move on to ordinance number 2025-36 and resolution 2025-80 approving the MacArthur Court Development Agreement and Affordable Housing Implementation Plan. We've got a brief staff report. Hi, May.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Our principal planner, Liz West-Morland, has a brief presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Stapleton, city council members. Liz West-Morland, principal planner. I'm presenting tonight on behalf of Jenny Hansen, who is at home with her newborn daughter. This item is the MacArthur Court Development Agreement and Affordable Housing Implementation Plan. The project site is located in the very far east side of the city, in the airport area adjacent to the city of Irvine. It comprises five parcels and is almost an entire block. Here are the various addresses that are on the site. The applicant is requesting to vest rights for the future development of a mixed-use campus, which would include 700 apartment dwelling units and 10,000 square feet of retail or restaurant space. To accomplish this, the applicant is requesting a development agreement to vest development rights for 10 years in exchange for public benefits. One of those identified public benefits is the provision of affordable housing at an off-site location. Therefore, a voluntary Affordable Housing Implementation Plan is requested. The affordable housing units, as I mentioned, would be located off-site and would be 7% of the total market rate units that are proposed. So if the applicant develops the entire 700 dwelling units on the site of market rate, then they would be required to build 49 affordable units off-site. The applicant does not have a specific project at this time, a specific design. So the future development project would be subject to a site development review, traffic study, subdivision map, and SEQA, which would be reviewed by the planning commission at a future date. This is a conceptual site plan that's been provided by the applicant, Irvine Company, to show the type of project that may be proposed. It would include potentially two new residential buildings consisting of 700 apartments, and then a 10,000 square foot non-residential building, which would likely be retail or restaurant. They would retain some of the existing office buildings that are on the site today and then keep the existing parking structure that's also on the site. To provide a little bit more detail on the development agreement, as I mentioned, this is voluntary to vest rights. It would vest rates for 700 residential apartment units and 10,000 square feet of non-residential for a term of 10 years, so to allow them to build the units over the 10-year period. However, the way that the development agreement is structured is to incentivize the development at an earlier date within this housing cycle. So first is a public benefit fee, general public benefit fee of $17,000 a unit for any units that are not built, meaning they have not received a building permit on or after July 1st, 2028. Another fee includes the MacArthur Boulevard revitalization fee. This is $3.25 million. That would go towards the improvement of MacArthur Boulevard, a project that Public Works is working on. In the airport area, residential projects are required to dedicate a half acre of their parcel for parkland. And so the applicant is proposing to go above and beyond this requirement and provide a one-acre public easement for publicly accessible open space. The applicant will be subject to development impact fees, including fireplace, recreation, and sewer, whereas water is provided by a separate agency. And then an affordable housing implementation plan for those 49 dwelling units that would be located off-site. If the applicant does not build those affordable units off-site by the specified deadline, they would be required to dedicate land to the city to build the affordable units or require the payment of an in-lu fee for the affordable. The project is consistent with the program Environmental Impact Report that was certified by the city council back in 2024, which evaluated impacts from the new housing overlays. And the applicant prepared a 15183 consistency analysis to demonstrate that it was consistent. It concluded that there's no new impacts as part of this project, and this document was peer-reviewed by the city's consultant, who prepared the original EIR. Lastly, the project, because it includes over 500 dwelling units, did require a water supply assessment, which was approved by the Irvine Ranch Water District. With that, it concludes my presentation. I just have one more item to note that at the request of Irvine Company, condition of approval number 10 to the resolution number 2025-80 has been modified to be consistent with the development agreement. And so we would ask the city council to approve the resolution as amended. Thank you.
Okay, and I also forgot to ask for ex parte communication from any council members. Did anyone have any communication? Councilmember Wagon?
I did not.
Barto?
I did not.
Grant?
None.
Blom?
None.
Weber?
None.
Kleiman?
None.
And I have none as well. Okay. Any comments, questions from the council before we go to public comments? Open the public hearing? None? Okay. All right. We'll go into public comments on this item.
Good evening, Mayor Stapleton, members of the council. I am Shawna Schaffner, Chief Executive Officer of CAA Planning, and I represent Irvine Company in this application tonight. Ms. West-Morland has given you a very good staff report. I don't have much to add, other than we have reviewed the staff report. We are in full agreement with the recommendations, and we urge the council to approve the item tonight. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on this item?
Adam Lovren, again, I think I've shared these concerns previously. 700 market rate units and then 49 of affordable housing to be built somewhere else at some point in the future. I see in the staff materials that the first approved building permit would have to be issued by January 3rd of 2029. And if the Irvine Company decides they can't build the affordable units, there'd be an in-lu fee of $36,690 per unit, I think. At some point, you look at market rate for 700 units over a span of time, and it's cheaper just to pay that in-lu fee than build affordable units at some unspecified site somewhere else. And I, you've heard me numerous times, I mean, there needs to be affordable housing here. It's a complicated issue. But to keep approving things and, oh, we'll deal with it later. Well, at the same time, affordable housing is going away on several other fronts and not being replaced, even if it's three units or 51 units. It's just a problem. And people that serve cocktails and flip burgers and work on boats should have somewhere that they can live close to work. And if the building of affordable housing just keeps getting put off, we'll do it somewhere else. We'll do it later, not sure where. It really needs to be addressed soon. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Any other comments on this item?
Mayor Stapleton and council members, Ron Rubino from Eastwood. You know, I don't think we're ever going to achieve the city's housing plan with the number of affordable units, you know, at a 7% rate. And I can pay you a fee if I can't locate them. The affordable housing is, the income standards for affordable housing is working families. And these are people who work for the city. They work for the hospital. So it's, I think a lot of people in the city don't really have an understanding, haven't looked at the details of what affordable housing is and how it qualifies for that. And it seems like they should be built at the time you approve this kind of development agreement and set where you can't buy out of it if you can't locate it. It should be mandatory, inclusionary, and it should be in the 15% or 20%, or we're never going to achieve anywhere near the goal that's been set in the housing plan that the city's adopted. So my comment is that affordable housing is housing for families, working families, and it should be included onsite on this project as a requirement in the area of 15%.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor Stapleton, members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. I indicated some concerns about this in writing. One of those that I expressed to the planning commission as well. I feel a little uncomfortable about letting the Irvine Company vest rights in a land use element that seems to be in flux or could be. Our current land use element that they're wanting to take units out of and appropriate to themselves is vulnerable in at least three respects. One, there is a court case, an opinion issued by the appeals court in Redondo Beach that would leave our housing element open to challenge from anyone from its use of overlays, which the court says are not an adequate way to meet our RENA requirements. Second, there's an initiative you're going to be speaking about in the next agenda item, which would upset probably the property rights to this parcel. And third, there's a rather iffy director's determination that changed the status of this in a way that is effectively rezoning properties, when a director, I don't think, can rezone properties. But those are concerns. The process has also been a little odd. You may have noticed in other Irvine Company property. This, the staff report acknowledges this is in a planned community called the Cole Center, planned community number 15 in the city, which I believe currently does not allow housing. And in the past, we've gone to pains to amend those planned communities to allow the housing. It's odd that they're getting their development agreement before we've gone through that step. And then finally, to address the affordable housing issue that the others have spoken about. I did look this afternoon at the housing element, and without the director's determination, there were three housing opportunity sites here. In our housing plan, we promised on about, about eight acres that we could develop 472 units, of which 190 would be affordable. Even if we count the 49 that might or might not be built, we seem to be 150 short of what we promised in the housing element. And I understand, under the no net loss principle, that that is going to be taken away from our buffer because we're not producing. And if we keep doing this, our buffer is going to disappear. You're going to have to add units to these. I also point out that the Irvine Company, we only expected 472 units maximum at this site. That was 50 dwelling units per acre on eight acres. It looks like Irvine Company is now recommending 700 units on about nine acres. That's 80 units per acre, which is over what we're allowed. Apparently, the director added the, augmented the area to bring the number down. But why is the Irvine Company expecting to build to that high density? How tall are these buildings going to be? Are they going to get this interest and then use it somewhere else? What is the plan? It seems a very high number for a small area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker. Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and bring it back here before I close public, or public hearing. Anybody on council have any questions for the applicant or for? Okay. What? Nobody? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Bring it back up here. Any comments, questions, anyone on council? All right, Councilmember Blom.
I'm just going to go to move staff recommendation.
As amended?
As amended.
Okay, do we have a second? Councilmember Weber? Okay, let's vote.
Motion carried by unanimous vote.
Okay. All right, thank you. Current business, it's now time to move on to certification of responsible housing initiative petition and consideration of council action options. Do we have a staff report, a brief staff report?
Yes.
Okay.
So on October 2nd, 2025, the Newport Beach Stewartship Association submitted an initiative for referendum petition titled the Responsible Housing Initiative. This petition's main purpose is to propose amendment to the city's general plan land use element to facilitate the development of 2,900 affordable housing units reserved exclusively for extremely low, very low, low and moderate income households. Once the petition was verified, was sent to the Orange County Register Recorder Office, and on November 5th, 2025, the Orange County Register voters confirmed that the petition contains the required number of valid signatures of city electors to qualify the referendum for an election and certify the results. So the main action that is, first action that the council is asked to do tonight is accept the certification of the Orange County Register voters as to verification of signatures of the Responsible Housing Initiative. Once this is approved, the options after that that the council can take tonight is to request a report on the effects of the proposed initiative prior to taking any further action, as permitted by the election law, or adopt the proposed initiative as submitted by the vote, by the petitioners without any amendments. Or the third option is submit the initiative to the voters at either special election that has to be, take place between 88, from 88 to 103 days from today's date, or whenever the council makes a decision, or put it on a general municipal election of November 3rd, 2026, and consolidate with other elections. If the council orders a report tonight, the report has to be presented by staff within 30 days from today's date, which the deadline will be December 18th, and the next city council meeting is December 9th. So if you choose to direct staff to do the report, that will be presented on December 9th. Following receipt of the report, the city council will have to decide whether to adopt the ordinance or submit the initiative measure to vote for the election. It needs to be noted that adopting the initiative without any amendment or should the electors vote at the next election, the adopted measure cannot be amended or repealed except by a vote of the people at the different election. Should the council decide to call the election, if we consolidate, so the city clerk's office received the estimates from the Orange County Register Recorder Office. And of course, consolidating with the general municipal election on November 3rd is the cheapest version for the city to pay for the election. It is estimated between 113,000 and 140, almost 144,000. Or the other option is to call special election to be held no less than 88 days, so it will be about middle of February. And the course for that election was estimated over a million of dollars, over $1 million, almost $1,200,000. It could come a little bit less. We contacted some other cities like Anaheim, and the estimate came like about 100,000 less than what estimated by Orange County. And at this point, the recommendation is to first to accept the certification by the Orange County of the initiative petition and to decide on the option.
Okay, thank you. Anyone on council have any comments to make before we open up to the public? Okay, go ahead.
Can the city attorney explain why we cannot include the initiative on the upcoming primary?
Yeah, so briefly, the elections code provides that you can have the, either at a regular election. And for Newport Beach, the state charter sets the regular election in November. Then that's by charter. Or you can have a special election, but it has to be held within that set period of time that the city clerk just mentioned. And the primary in June is just not within that period of time for a special election. And there's no other option for a regular election except for what's set by the charter.
So the primary isn't somehow considered a regular election. It's some other version of elections?
The language they use in the elections code is regular election of the body. And the regular election set forth in our charter is the one in November.
Got it. Thank you.
Question? All right, any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and open to public comments on this item. How many people are playing? How many people are planning on speaking on this item? Okay. We have two microphones. If you want to come forward, we can create a long deck. Mr. Mayor?
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Council members, staff. Thank you for having me and listening to me. I could have read to you a bunch of statistics. I had a whole thing to read. And I thought, wow, wouldn't you just love to listen to some statistics? So I know you don't want to do that, because I certainly didn't those eight years. But it's difficult when you've made, when you've already made up your minds. It's a little challenging to be here. But, so I thought I would just tell a story. And my story is going to be about something that happened 65 years ago. Caltrans had a strange idea. They notified us that they thought it would be a good idea to bring the San Diego freeway down to Newport Beach, bring it down the 55, go over the top of Ha Hoog Hospital, go down the top of King's Road, all the way, and then back out Jamboree, back out to the freeway again. What a wonderful thing. That's just exactly what this city needed, to be split in half by a freeway. Well, it took seven years, and we were one of the only two cities in the entire state of California to stop a freeway. How did we do it? We did it with a vote of the people. And something that has such a huge impact as this does, this upcoming housing element, to create that much more traffic and that much more headaches to a city that's already packed with people and you can't drive around or buy a hot dog very easily. So, and by the way, the city council back then was totally for a freeway, to go right down the center of our city, believe it or not. So it took seven years, but the people voted correctly. And it was so difficult because yes meant no, and no meant yes. They had to vote twice to get it on the initiative ballot. And then they had to vote again to say no. Yet through all that, it worked. We don't have a freeway going down the center of our city. And the, it worked because the people are not stupid in this town. And I put my faith in them, and I think you should too. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker.
Yes, hi, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Kurt Fleming, and I've been in the city since the early 70s. I've lived here. I've been involved in quite a number of projects interfacing with the city, including as a founder of the Newport Aquatic Center. This issue is dear to my heart as well, similar reasons to Duffy. The Responsible Housing Initiative returns major housing decisions to the Newport Beach voter. In the year 2000, Newport Beach voters overwhelmingly approved the Green Light Initiative. Some of you will remember that, now known as Section 423, which requires voters' approval for major housing plans. Despite Section 423, in July 2024, this council adopted a plan to allow more than 8,000 new housing units to be built in Newport Beach by 2030. That number is likely an underestimate once you factor in the state laws and projects approved by the city independent of the July 2024 housing plan. The amount of new housing authorized by this city council is 4,000 units. You all know this, more than the state law requires. Surprisingly, the council has never explained why its extreme housing plan is necessary or how it serves the interests of this community. A housing expansion of this magnitude will significantly impact traffic, public safety, and our overall life quality in the city. The Responsible Housing Initiative supports and facilitates the city's efforts to meet local housing needs and state law requirements while also ensuring that voter preferences take priority over the interests of housing developers. The Responsible Housing Initiative was thoughtfully drafted to provide smart and balanced housing growth, which our city can practically accommodate. This initiative is needed to preserve our city's character and to make our city continue to be well-run and well-managed. At this point, I, this is how I see it. The city council has two options. Listen to the voters and adopt the Responsible Housing Initiative as law, or second, send the Responsible Housing Initiative to a vote to the residents, which Duffy referred to. I urge the council to pursue the first approach. The initiative has overwhelming community support. And adopting it now would show voters that the council is acting in their best interest and avoiding unnecessary expenditures that you had up on the screen to hold a vote. I believe the initiative now is the responsible decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor, city council members. I'm Jeff Herdman. I've lived in Newport Beach since 1953, and I'm a former city council member. I want to thank Duffy and Kurt for their remarks and for speaking up. I, like many others, agree with all of their comments. The city is required to inform the voters of the true character and purpose of the Responsible Housing Initiative. Despite those requirements, the city has unfairly tried to portray the initiative as an affordable housing initiative. This simply is not the case. It's false. The characterization of the initiative is misleading because the initiative only requires that a portion of new housing units be affordable to low and moderate income households. Talking about low income, in the, in the county of Orange, low income means an income of $94,750 a year for a one-person household. A moderate income is somewhere between 114,000 and 216,000, depending upon the household size. We're talking about people like teachers and nurses and healthcare providers, and firemen, and policemen. This initiative does not require an additional affordable housing, additional affordable housing than what California law requires. Now, here's the essence of why I'm standing up here. Your pattern of conduct related to your housing plan is very concerning to the public. We were first told that you would comply with Section 423 of the city charter by allowing us to vote on the housing plan. But after two years, and at the last minute, you reversed course, claiming that California law barred a local vote. Now you're unfairly portraying this initiative to deliberately confuse voters and prevent a fair vote to the city's long-term housing strategy. Your actions may very well violate California election law. You're also improperly interfering with our constitutional rights to control the destiny of our community. I urge you to promptly correct this mixed characterization of the Responsible Housing Initiative and let the people have a fair vote. It is long past the time that voters have a say in what the future of our city will look like. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item?
Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back here. Anybody on council, Mr. Blum?
Thank you. I appreciate the speakers coming out for that. You know, I saw the initiative happening. I saw the ballot or the signature gathering. And I actually took time to talk to some of those people who were paid for by one of the largest developers in the city. Actually, somebody who has more apartments under construction than anybody. Just such an interesting thing, that the largest developer would be trying to stop other things from getting built. So, you know, they often say you follow the money. And this tends to be one of those cases, that you follow the money to who put this on and for what benefit. We sat up here for years, debated this, brought it back to HCD. We started with this option, actually. This was the first thing we did. When we brought this to the state and said, this is all we want to build. And they said, no. And then we adjusted, and they said, no. Then we adjusted again, and they said, no. Mr. Duffield was actually on council when we went through all this process. This is not a decision anyone up here has ever made lightly. We're all Newport residents. I love hearing that we lived here for X. Yeah, I was born and raised here as well. We all agree. We want responsible housing. If we could, we would secede Newport from the state of California because we manage it a lot better than the rest of the state.
Is that a motion?
At the end of the day, why is the person that has the most, the most apartments under construction funding a voter initiative to stop anyone else from building anything? It's counterintuitive. How many units are up in the airport district right now under construction from Mr. Ken Pasern, whose name was on the top of that ballot initiative? It's very interesting. So he decides no one else gets to build until he's done. That doesn't seem like it's something that's all about affordable or equitable or for the working class. I get it. We want to be able to build workforce housing. We're trying for different programs that do that. Everyone that has commented about that, it's really difficult when the land value is what it is. So yes, you know, some of the other speakers, I know Mr. Herdman was a principal. Yes, that is how Newport started. That was one of the great things we've had, that this was working-class families. My parents were photographers here when they got their first house. Things have changed. And I'm not always saying for the better, but we do everything we can to make sure that we are making the right decisions. And none of these decisions have been easy when it comes to what HCD and RENA have brought to us. But I also don't like being manipulated by a large developer to tell me that this is in the best interest of anyone. It's in the best interest of somebody. And I really, I feel slightly betrayed by that. For four years, we were up here, and we have debated. You talk about not having the public have a say. How many meetings have been just about this? How many sub-meetings? How many other people have been involved? We've never hidden it. We've always tried to work with it. So don't categorize us as trying to pull the fast one over Newport residents. We are Newport residents. We want what's best for this city. And I'm not ever going to kowtow to one developer who's trying to make more money than everyone else because he wants nothing else built. And that's the reality. His name was on the top of it. I know it was altruism why he did this. I know that's why he's spending millions of dollars doing this. Altruism, right? He doesn't even live here anymore. Moved his kids out. That, that doesn't seem like a real Newporter to me. So I have a lot of issues with how we're portraying this. I'm happy to see this go to a vote. I am. I'm not sitting here going to fight that. You guys went out and got signatures? Let's bring it to a vote. We'll see how that rolls out. Okay? I just, I'm, I'm just a little amazed that some of us have sat up here and literally debated this for years and moved forward with it. And now we've about course after that. Okay? We're not builders in the city. We entitle, we zone, that's all we can do. And we're trying to make sure that there weren't bigger ramifications, that our individual neighborhoods weren't destroyed by this. It took a lot of work and a lot of effort. We didn't want builders remedy in the port streets, in bay shores, anywhere else you could be. And so we did try everything we could. And you know what? It wasn't easy. And so it's easy to sit up here and tell us that we're doing a bad job. But we've worked very hard tirelessly to give Newport the best shake in this entire deal. And sometimes you're right. It's tough because we didn't set the rules. Sacramento did. And we're doing what we can to give Newport the best chance in that.
Okay, Councilman Regret.
Thank you. First, I do want to recognize the more than 6,000 Newport Beach residents who signed the initiative. Civic participation at this scale reflects a community that is paying attention and cares deeply about the future of our city, as we all here do. Newport Beach is required by state law to adopt a housing element with mandated housing units. I am not in favor of this mandate. And I believe that the state has done us a huge disservice by legislating this way. However, as Councilmember Blum eloquently put it, after extensive legal analysis and public outreach and workshops and hearings and meetings and more meetings, this council approved an updated general plan to bring Newport Beach into compliance and avoid serious penalties, including the loss of local land use control, that, pen, these penalties that would be otherwise imposed by the state of California. Given the ballot initiative, Newport Beach residents will ultimately decide whether they agree with this measured approach to safely moving forward with the mandates. I also want to raise a very practical concern about holding a special election, which comes at a very steep cost, as our city clerk mentioned, upwards over a million dollars. That's money that would come out of our city budget, taxpayer dollars. And ultimately, I'm concerned that the benefit of a special election over a general election does not justify that expense. As a council member, my commitment is to maintain transparency, uphold resident initiatives, and comply with law, remaining ever mindful of my duty to make decisions that protect Newport Beach from unnecessary risk. That said, I respect the initiative process and the community's right to bring this matter forward. And I will continue to commit to the best possible resolution as we take the next steps in this process. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Blum.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to do a quick straw vote among the council members to see, we're going to need to write an opposition to this on the ballot member, or on the ballot. And so if we would be in favor of that.
Who wants to write the opposition?
The council will write the opposition.
Who, are you asking who wants to be on it?
Yeah, Aaron, can you clarify?
So the proponents of the, of the measure get to write in favor of it. The question is, do any of the city council members want to write the opposition to the, to the measure? If you decide to go forward with either a special election or a regular election, you'd be deciding who would be writing those, you know, arguments against the measure.
Is that something we need to decide tonight?
You would need to decide tonight if you decided to move forward with a special election or regular election this evening.
And you can have one or three, or one or two, or?
Yeah, you can have up to three council members. But because of the Brown Act, you shouldn't have more than that.
Okay, so you're asking who would want to do that?
Yeah, I mean, I would say I would like.
So I'm assuming, okay, show of hands, who would want to be on the opposition side of writing that? Councilmember Barto, Weber, and Blum? Okay.
Great. And then I'd like to make a motion. And because this is a bit of a com, complicated one, I'm going to go ahead and read the motion. It would be to approve staff recommendations 17A, B, C, and D with four, moving that to the general election.
Okay, so that'd be not doing a Section 9212 report.
That's correct.
Okay.
I'll second. I think that motion would incorporate having the three council members writing the, writing the arguments.
I'll amend the motion to have the three council members write.
Can you repeat the provisions?
A, B, C, D, and item four under D, which is general election.
I'll second it.
Okay, Councilmember Weigand, we have a second. So we'll continue the discussion. Motion on the floor. Anybody on council have any comments? Okay, then let's vote. Or not?
Motion carried by unanimous vote.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Okay, Madam Clark, please read motion for consideration, reconsideration.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions for reconsideration? Okay, hearing none. Any public comments on closed session items? Okay, Mr. Harp, do we have a, an announcement on closed? Mr. Harp, do we have an announcement on closed session items?
Yes, the city council adjourned a closed session to meet with the city's real property negotiators regarding negotiations with John Saunders on behalf of 3848 Campus Drive LP regarding the property located at 3848 Campus Drive, and to meet with legal counsel regarding litigation entitled Sefelden versus Newport Beach. And that's all on the agenda under item 11A and B.
Okay, we stand reassessed to closed session. Thank you. Thank you.